Richard is here to tell us anything we want to know. It's right next door, building that's been sitting a little while. Used to be the auto parts. Now it's been a couple of shops once in a while. They want to open a quality secondhand store. And they have two lots which will give at least seven to eight parking spaces around the building and then a couple more could go in the back if they had to so. We have this diagram with that, that's pretty good to most of us, I think. Do you have anything you'd like to say to us?
We might be able to put in one or two more parking spots on the the lineup that's in there, but we won't be able to put any on the back. It slopes up and it goes around and that would be just for delivery vehicles.
Okay. Napa people used to kind of park it between the bus garage and this, but that's okay. All right, good. Anything else? Did you bring up to the lawyer about combining lots?
Yes, I did. And she didn't have any problem with that.
Okay, good. Did we get the cards for the notice on the public hearing?
Um, what I have here is a not sure how to explain, explain this, but it's the copies of the mailing that they sent out. They did not get back all of the green receipt cards. I guess stuff was going on or whatever. I really don't know. But I, this is a copy to show proof that we did send them out. There's tracking numbers and everything with it. I did also.
They were going from the Long Island Post Office.
Yes. Yes, I also talked to Johnson and she said that there might have been more than the required amount of names on the list for the 500 feet within the building area. So.
That's a lot.
So we, we sent out whatever was on the list that they, they received in the office. And soon as they, all those receipts come in, we'll be able to get them up here and give them to whoever needs them.
Yeah, if you get them back to Jocelyn, I think she probably agrees with us. And she can get them to Amy eventually. She's the one that's in the building all the time and you can get to sending them out. Does anybody in the public want to be heard?
Public speaking.
Anybody online that's got.
John or Kevin, do either of you have anything that you want to ask or say during the public hearing? Or art?
No.
Looks like a no. All right. All right, we'll sit here a couple of minutes till seven minutes later.
I took a picture of the drawing. Okay.
Two sixteen bridge.
Talking about Chinese children. There is a fall down.
Okay, the time being here up to seven thirty, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Anyone comes in later will hear. Okay, if you want to do it that way, I will second that motion. You know, you're gonna make it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Justin and Heather, you came to talk to us tonight, so go for it and then you can get out of here.
Well, we hope to not take up too much of your time, but I'm Heather Daxey and I'm the director of planning for the county.
And I'm Justin Rock, I'm a planner, also in Sullivan County.
So when you get your two thirty nine letters from us, which you don't get too often because you don't have a whole bunch of two thirty nines from us. So we're just kind of going around, yes. Find nicely with that letter. But we just wanted to, you know, let you know that we're there for you guys. If you have any planning questions, any training, you know, we don't want to be writing letters that aren't useful to you guys. So, you know, if there's an issue on a project, feel free to reach out to us. As far as the trainings go, you're the pretty good about attending. We try and offer a bunch of different topics so that we can cover things that are of interest to you guys.
Or you have some coming up soon?
Uh, well, so we're working on in-person ones, but right now we've been kind of sponsoring, you know, sponsoring the dissemination of information about the GEC ones because they did just change their wetland regulations, as you guys know. So they're trying to get people up to speed with what those changes are and the expectation. You know, the map has changed where the wetlands are and the processes that you have to go through should that pop up on your project site. So they have one that's available to watch and listen to online now. And they have one, that second one coming up. The one that's coming up, I believe they are offering to send out a, an actual certificate of training credits.
Yeah, so I think we all need that now. Is there a means to sign up for that?
Uh, I don't know. I think it's on the, we'll send out an email. So if we don't have your email addresses, we just send them to the town, you probably get once you change your email.
Well. The videos that you watch and listen to online, do you get your credits?
So the, the, um, the credits are at the mercy of the town. Or if you might not be the right word, but the town decides.
If I get to decide. Be merciful, be merciful.
But that said, we have never had a municipality turned down, you know, thing that we've offered. Um, we do try and get Department of State to come in once a year so you can do like a one-stop shop to get all of your credits on one night. You know, try and bring in snacks so you can send. Yeah.
Which is good if you're not engaged there.
Uh, yeah, there are. There are things available online. The Department of State has a lot of things that you can just download and watch. You know, just clear it down first. But if there's any topics that you guys are interested in, then let us know. You know, we're working at, um, you know, things about battery storage because that's going to become a thing. If it's not already a thing for you guys, please. Try to keep up on the topic.
You know, it's a lot of delivery of the, so.
Oh, right. I think that, that a lot of the, um, the big battery storage areas, they're looking more all areas because of their space. And, um.
And it's away from people.
Yeah, and you know, so there are different impacts of that, that you can sort of does your private department prepare it for it, you know, does it have noise? I mean, what does it look like? And I can't answer that question because I haven't gone through the training myself yet. So there are topics that we're looking at because, um, as I mentioned, we are looking at some countywide initiatives.
So we're doing a water infrastructure assessment, both audible and wastewater throughout the county, as Heather said. So, you know, looking at what's out there, what condition is it in? What are the current challenges? You know, anything impacting water quality or supply? Working with Delaware Engineering on that started in fall of last year, should be wrapping up fall this year. So that'll have, you know, comprehensive profiles in terms of what's out there. Some improvement recommendations from them as far as possibilities for whether it's expanding or, you know, otherwise you're finding it not being what's currently there.
Which is a pressing issue right here in this very water district.
Hopefully we'll be able to figure out, you know, funding and stuff as it goes to once you sort of have that baseline and there'll be like reports that we can hand you with the day that's just about Justin.
Yeah, hopefully the water and sewer department is in contact to be not committed.
Yeah, yeah, they're in touch with.
Yeah, you guys have been great. We, uh, hazard mitigation.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so actually I'm getting a letter in the mail to Supervisor Johnson, hopefully tomorrow. But hazard mitigation plan, if you're not familiar with it, so plan has to be updated every five years. Comes through FEMA and it's all about, you know, any, for us, it's mainly flooding, you know, is a big one in Sullivan County. Of course, there are others, mostly weather related for us. So the plan includes, you know, projects that each town or village will identify things that may need to be done to lessen the impact of something that they have occurred in the past. So the last plan update was in 2020. We're going to be initiating the update process, you know, sometime in the near future for this one because it will be due by 2026. So, you know, we'll be in touch with probably not too many of you on planning board, but definitely folks in the municipality here to get updated information on what was done from the last plan in terms of projects that were completed or not completed for whatever reason. And then see what it's looking like going forward for the current means here.
Um, we'll be applying for funding for a countywide master plan. You know, we keep telling you guys have to comprehensive plans. We don't really have one ourselves, so we're gonna fix that, but we are gonna ask for your help with that. We have sent out, oh, we already closed it, but we had a survey for our parks master plan, looking countywide at what parks are available, what parks are county-owned, what you guys have, you know, where, where are the things that people want that are missing, things like that. So working on that. I think that, that might be it, but we are really grateful that you guys are here, know that this is a difficult job to do and that you're basically volunteers. So it's important. Um, it's important that you guys communicate with the town board too. If you guys see things that aren't necessarily lining up with your comprehensive plan or your zoning code, if you think there's something off, you know, you guys are really the frontline for development. So if development is shifting, you know, with the desire to go a different direction, you guys have to let the town board know so that that can be corrected. Fixed to whatever way you guys need it fixed. Again, we just want to let you know we're there. Uh, Justin is your point person. You can call him with any questions. He'll know how to direct it. Does anybody have questions for us? Nope.
All right. Heather's gone now?
Yes, she retired.
Congratulations if you're the new.
No, well, I'm, I'm the new director, but I'm not the new commissioner. They restructured us and Heather Brown is the commissioner and she really good to work with.
Marked us a long time too.
Yeah, she really knows the county and she's got a really good grasp of the, all the divisions within the county. So that's very helpful to us.
Good. It's nice to see somebody that we've known for a long time. Still here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's nice that she kind of rose up through the ranks.
Yeah.
And go it up there. All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, you need to know back and forth and you know who it is. Justin always gets right back to me, you know. I didn't know who he was. You've been around long enough, Heather, we know each other.
I know, I remember running right home with you.
Yes. I do that, remember that too.
Do we need to officially call the meeting order now? Or did we already start?
No, we didn't start, sorry. You want to.
I'll make a motion that we also. We don't need a motion. We're in the law, just trying to move us along.
I'm sorry, keeping you out too long.
I know.
Okay, with that, we will meeting open with pledge of allegiance.
This is Kevin.
Okay, we had minutes sent out to us from December meeting. Does anybody have any questions on or not see them? Anybody care to make a motion to accept the December minutes?
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept our December twenty twenty four minutes seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence is a big blank, but it's really not because we just got the letter from Heather on the.
Yeah, I got that afterwards.
Yeah, I just printed it out tonight too. I, you know, emailed Justin before and he said it'd be here in time and it was. So we got a local determination for Janie's Children's property and yard sale store accepted. So that is our first item of old business. Everybody saw the application on trust. We now have a parking plan which looks like it's pretty reasonable. Richard says we can use both lots. I used to be assessor and I used to do those things and send to the planning board. So we'll send the assessor a note to the planning board if we agree to it, would like that. Jane should send her a note requesting it be done.
A note to.
Assessor at Justin dot org to combine the lots.
Okay. Send.
Because that's the assessor's total control. I don't have that control anymore. Did you get down the email at assessor@testin.org?
No, I didn't. What was that?
Assessor, A S S E S S O R at testin.org.
Yeah, I got that down.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this application for better secondhand store?
Nope.
I know the last time Mike said it was improvement to get a building going again and have some off-street parking, so.
Yes, hopefully if we wish them best.
And it has one building and one drawl lane to the public parking lots running over its laws, so it shouldn't be a problem. Okay, does anybody care to make a motion?
I will make that motion. We approve the application.
I guess it's for a special use.
Special use permit.
For parcel eight dash one dash seven and eight dash one dash eight for Janie's Children's Theater LLC.
Are we just doing eight dash one dash seven or are we doing there eight also?
We're going to request it to combine, so if we're in the parking, it's on eight. So just put it in there. I don't think it would be a problem. And that way they kind of will stay together.
Okay.
In the future. All right, we have a motion. Anybody care to second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion on the floor for Janie's Children's Theater LLC. And with a second, any further comments from board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If I had to gavel out, I could bang it now. Okay, you're, you're approved, yeah. Does anybody have an application around it that was stamped for Jim and so on?
Um, copy of the applicant, yeah.
I don't know, we haven't.
I have one.
So yeah, you can make copies, so, well, we could stamp it later and then you'll send it to me. With the stamp, I think it's on the.
Okay, I could always stop by and get out of my cell.
Well, she works elsewhere, so. Maybe has a full-time job elsewhere, so. Or if she just mails it, she can mail it to Jane or whatever.
I don't have a listening tone.
Okay. Yeah, I must email it to me. I might have a copy in the bag somewhere to. Anyway, we will get to that after we finish our meeting, okay? And I guess we're putting in that motion somewhere as your occupancy and because Jim wants that stated. We good on that, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, our new business, Bob is here from Scouting America. And we used to know as the voice of straight in New York Council. I, we get maps which I emailed to you, so you saw the pretty colors. The Blue Fox has a few buildings that approach into the Boyd Scouts. Probably part of something my grandfather's brother did when we first built him up. Way back when, or Nick Dale or Bob Lander, anyway. They're doing a lot line adjustment up Brook Road a ways, down ninety seven a ways and up around the building to give five point seven more acres to Blue Fox. They put their buildings on what will become their property. This is not to be taken as a separate lot, it's to be combined with Blue Fox properties. So it doesn't have road frontage on each road if enough, but that doesn't matter. It's just going into other parcel. So we're doing it, looking at it as a lot line adjustment. Which means we don't have to do a whole bunch of mailings and public hearing and so.
No, it's, it's an exemption. No, you don't have to.
Fill it out for us.
Okay.
Okay. So you don't have to do secret or any questions. I'll shut up.
No, I have no questions. I think it's wonderful that they're doing it because you don't want in the long run have any issues. I think it's fine. And we don't have to do the secret, right?
No, because it's, it's an exemption, so it's, it's, it's not distracting, but they meet the criteria.
Okay.
They're entitled to the. They're, they're serious, they don't create any new lots. They don't create any non-buildable property, which they're not, and they don't create a non-conformity.
Now, Bob, you've communicated to the board that, that this stuff has to be combined, right?
Have you heard that? Yes. Our attorney has already wrapped the contract and stated in that contract that it happens.
Okay.
BEC and the Conservation Fund are also comfortable with you having interest in place right now.
All right. Okay, anybody care to make a motion?
I will make that motion that we approve this lot line adjustment, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Greater New York Council lot line adjustment around the Blue Fox motel and restaurant. Five point seven acres to be joined down to Blue Fox properties. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brendan? I mute yourself.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hi, everybody. Wish I could be up there with you, but we're gonna do this remote tonight.
It's, it's cold, Brendan.
I'm, I'm presenting a, a proposed sign change for the union, for the Narrowsburg Union. You know, I think you all know we have a sign which was part of the legacy school building. It's near the intersection of Bridge Street and Erie Avenue where Kirk Road ties in. It's, I'll call it a static sign and we're looking to replace it. And can you, I pulled this up on my screen, can you see? I have an image of a sign, a line sketch drawing. I guess not. I guess we gotta go. Let me back up.
When I talked to you yesterday or whenever, it didn't come to mind that you really have to go through Jim. And if he can't approve it under our rules, then he'll refer you for variance.
Okay.
And if he thinks we have to do something, he'll refer you here. We don't, I get confused because you used to be able to just come in here with your application. You've done it, that's how we were doing it. Now everything's going through Jim. So that's where you're gonna need to go, but if you can show it to us.
Okay, um, the, I'm getting a message from Zoom that the host has disabled screen sharing. So if you could turn on screen sharing, I'll walk you through the images.
We can take your cogs first. Now you should be able to share.
Okay, let's try it again.
Just moving the sign.
Okay. Go back one, hold on, hold on, that's not it. Hold on. Sorry, I thought I had it in the right place. Guess not. I have a sign which is our sign. A sketch of a sign, twenty twenty we came and we proposed a sign. It was a rather large sign. It was over thirteen feet wide, six feet tall. And it posed a number of issues and we withdrew the application. We're now looking at, ah. We're talking to a company called Cirrus. Can you see this, the image?
Yeah, I'm not yet.
See you.
Okay, so Cirrus makes an LED sign. This is an LED sign image. I mean, it doesn't have any. This is an LED sign image. I mean, it doesn't have any graphics on it. It's just uh showing you really the outline of the box. It sits on a base, on a monument. Um this is an example of one. This is not what we're looking to do. What we would do is we would do a monument, we would do a sign, we would have um uh the only thing on top would be our our kind of signature little mini roof that we do on all of our signs. It's just a little shed uh roof on front and back. But we would have that. This is a smaller version of the sign. This is a, the uh the first one I showed you is, I believe, four by eight, yep. Like it's the size of a sheet of plywood or a sheet of sheet rock. This one here is a little smaller. It's four foot by six foot. And you want me to go back?
If you hit the, we can't see anything. All we see is you. So you need, you have to hit the share button on the bottom.
Ah, I thought I had that. Okay, hold on. Sorry. Okay. Back, can you see that's the screen sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's okay. This is a four by eight. A little larger than what we have right now. It's on a base or a monument pedestal. This is an example of one. We are not looking to do uh uh anything on top. This is an example of what somebody else did, but ours would be just a sign like this on a monument base. This is a little larger than the sign that we have now. This is one a little smaller than the sign we have right now. It's a four foot, six foot on a base. Similar example, here again, this is, we're not looking to wrap this with other static signage that this thing is. Would just be a, an LED sign. So this is really the um this image, but this is the one we're asking for. It's a little bit wider. So just to show you some other. So can you see this? Do you see the dime bank? So I asked Cirrus, uh do they have any signs in the area? And the closest one they have is in Holly. This is on Route Six, the Dime Bank. The part that is the LED is the bottom part. It's the part uh that with a blue background that says switch to Dime Bank. The upper part is a static sign, illuminated static sign. So this is just, I wanted to go look at it. It's very neat, very clean, um very sharp image. Um you know, it's it's a, it's a high-quality sign. This happens to be on a long pole. We would not do that. Ours would be close to the ground, like the existing sign is close to the ground. So this is really a preview. This is not a a full application at this point. And I was looking for direction on how to proceed, and I think I just got it from Ken, that I should be presenting this to Jim Crowley.
As far as I can discern, that would be your best bet, start with him.
This is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we ask a question or is that appropriate? Brendan, do you envision the sign as a two-sided or just one side facing?
It would be two-sided. It would with one side facing up Bridge Street and the other side facing toward the intersection, toward Erie Avenue and the intersection. It would be front and back. And just the the driver on this too, just so you know, the original sign we presented in twenty twenty, we had a slot for all the tenants in the building, including the office tenants. You know, we have G five insurance and we have a couple of mental health um uh therapists in the building and others and um they said gee, they they really want to have some presence on the street that when somebody comes looking for them, that they get confirmation before they come walking in the building, they're coming into the right place. So we had, I think, uh something like twenty-five slots um on the sign. That's kind of what grew it to be so large, is we were looking for there to be a place for every tenant to have a have their name that it could be read from, you know, a car pulling up to Erie Avenue. So in this, we would, we would have a scrolling um tenant roster would be one of the scrolling images.
Do you have any other questions?
I have one small question. Would the apple tree continue to exist?
Um.
Or would the sign be in the way of the apple tree?
No, no, the, I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the apple tree, because the apple tree doesn't really interfere with the existing sign or the sign doesn't interfere with the apple tree. We we would put this right back in in the in the stone circle that surrounds the existing sign.
Okay.
Why? Do you like the apple tree or you like the deer that come and nibble it?
Apple tree and the deer that come in all the time.
They come all the time.
Yep.
It is a big attraction for the deer.
My my children look forward to making that turn and seeing them deer.
Yeah, as long as we don't have any accidents with deer, which we haven't, not that I know of.
Okay, Brendan, thank you very much for.
Okay, I thank you.
Know what's going on and it looks like something would be good for you. Get your tenants' names out there.
Yep.
Any uh board comments? Mister Public, do you have? We appreciate it. Right now with any lot, you won't see it in February, because there's nothing before us right now.
There was nothing more with that than Axing subdivision thing.
It's taking a while to get it redrawn, you know?
Yep.
They have to do the sewer lines and all that.
Okay.
Okay. A motion you want to make?
I'll make the motion.
Make your, yes.
Okay.
I second it.
Consider it adjourned.